Good evening and welcome to the City of Roswell Mayor and City Council meeting for April 11th, 2022. I am Mayor Kurt Wilson and I'm going to start this meeting off a little differently tonight. Randy Knight, our city administrator, has set a great example in committee meetings where he does the obvious. So as a resident, I have noticed when I've come to council meetings that I really didn't understand all of the decorum or the rules or exactly what was going on or why, you know, a lot of the proceedings. And so one of the things Randy's done at committee meetings is he's done a great job of kind of laying out the script for committee meetings. So I asked Randy's help and he was kind enough to write me a script that we'll be using forevermore, at least for the next three years and nine months in city council meetings. So bear with me and then I want to make a quick statement after that before we do the invocation and the moment of silence. I'd like to acknowledge the council members present, Councilmember Christine Hall, Councilmember Lee Hills, Councilmember William Morthland, Councilmember Peter Vanstrum. For the record, Councilmember Michael Palermo and Councilmember Marcella Zapata have an excused absence. In accordance with Section, Chapter 3.70 of the City Code, the City Council shall hold regular public meetings. The purpose of city council meetings are for the public to participate and speak on agenda items which constitute formal decisions by the elected body. These items are listed on the published agenda which can be accessed via the city website prior to the meeting. This is a public meeting and some items require a formal public hearing. A significant and important component of city council meetings are to hear directly from citizens on the items listed on the agenda. Public comments or questions are essential for the mayor and council to incorporate as we contemplate each decision. Citizens, residents are at the top of our organizational chart and therefore it is imperative for us to hear from residents in mayor and council meetings. If you would like to speak on an item, I ask that you be a Roswell resident and fill out a comment card which are located in the very back of the room or at the podium in order to ensure an accurate record of the meeting. We ask, of course, that everyone observe the principles of mutual respect and display the appropriate demeanor during the course of this meeting this evening, which is, which to me is obviously reflective of this great community. As mayor, I am the presiding officer of the meeting and will ensure the orderly exchange of comments, questions, and discussion leading to decision-making by the elected body. I would encourage those in attendance and the viewing audience to visit the city websites for meetings, events, and departmental information. You'll also find the mayor and council's 100-day plan, which will be updated this evening. We also encourage you to review and participate in the various activities and offerings in this great city. There are a number of events scheduled for this, for this month in the city of Roswell which promote community, physical activity, and leisure as we make Roswell the number-one family community in America. And before I ask Pastor Jenkins to come up here for the invocation, I would like, and I wish she was here so I don't see her, Sarah Beeson, I would like to issue a public apology because one of my jobs as mayor is to bring us together, not create separation. One of my jobs as mayor is to encourage for all residents to speak their minds. Hey Sarah, how are you? So I just apologized to you publicly. So let me do it again. No, speak of me, speak of me, because my job as, as your mayor is to encourage all of us to be part of the process, not to discourage anyone to not be part of the process. And I recognize that two weeks ago that I had been, that I helped to discourage comment and that's not my job. My job is to do the opposite. So I want to publicly apologize to Sarah for that and to anyone that was with Sarah that felt likewise. My job is to encourage debate, whether it, whether it agrees with me or disagrees with me. And so I just wanted to tell you I'm completely who's in the wrong and that I am sorry for that publicly. So Sarah, I hope you'll take my earnest apology for that and to the city I apologize as well. And with that, I have the great pleasure to, to a man who ran for mayor four years ago to invite Pastor Lee Jenkins to do our invocation this evening in our moment of silence.
Well, this week is a week that a lot of people of faith are celebrating and as I think about the life of Jesus, regardless of a person's faith, He embodied a lot of things, but these three things I want to pray for all of us and that is a spirit of love, a spirit of peace, and a spirit of wisdom. So let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you and we ask that you will help us to love each other and to respect each other as citizens of this great city, Roswell, Georgia. We also pray for peace. With so much disunity, this world needs peace. And we pray, oh God, that you will help us to be agents of peace and not chaos. And lastly, I especially want to pray for Mayor Wilson, for the city council, for the other leaders. I pray for wisdom for them, that you will guide and lead them so that they can make good decisions. I pray for, again, a spirit of unity where we will all give our input, but at the end of the day, we're trusting that God will guide and lead us. So we thank you for this great city of Roswell. We pray your blessings upon each and every person. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Jenkins. Thank you for being with us tonight, Lee. Tonight's flag ceremony is presented by Boy Scout Troop 985 and Cub Scout Pack 135. Carrying the national colors will be Asher Williams. Carrying the Troop 985, 985 flag will be Hudson Williams and carrying the Pack 135 flag will be John Cuvo.
Color Guard, attention. Those of you not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Color Guard, advance. Color Guard, halt. Color Guard, cross the colors.
I would like to call Ronald Jones, who served in the Marine Corps and is a member of the Johns Creek Rotary Club, to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color Guard, attention. Color Guard, retire the colors.
Outstanding job to Boy Scouts Troop 985, Cub Scout Pack 135. Thank you so much to Asher Williams, Hudson Williams, and John Cuvo. Thank you very much to Ronald Jones for our pledge tonight. Next on the agenda is the mayor's report. At this time, I would like to call Captain Philip Hindmiller, his wife Kirby, and his son Chris, who flew in to surprise his father, forward for the proclamation. At this time, I will read the proclamation for Captain Philip Hindmiller. This proclamation is for the esteemed veteran of Roswell.
Proclamation, Office of the Mayor, Captain Philip Hindmiller, esteemed veteran of Roswell. Phil Hindmiller was inducted into the United States Air Force in April 1969 as an E-1 after graduating from the University of Colorado. He graduated from Officer Training School in January 1970, earning the rank of Second Lieutenant. A few other specialized courses for training include water survival, survival training, and jungle survival courses. Phil went on to complete flight school at Williams Air Force Base in Tempe, Arizona, and whereas in February 1971, Phil was assigned to fly the Air Force C-7 transport aircraft, which was designed for short landings and takeoffs. In August of 1971, he was transferred to Camran Bay, Vietnam. His mission was, his mission was to fly the C-7, carrying troops and supplies to forward operating bases across Vietnam. These bases were typically, typically smaller encampments, encampments in the jungle, surrounded by barbed wire, having only a dirt strip for landing planes. These missions were so dangerous that Lieutenant Hindmiller was assigned to replace the previous pilot and crew who came under enemy fire and perished. Upon returning to the United States in April 1972, Phil was reassigned to flying B-52s for the 337th Bombardment Squadron out of Dias Air Force Base, Texas. While at Dias, he completed 480-day temporary duty tours to Guam and Thailand, successfully completing a total of 72 combat missions. Each mission flown over Vietnam and Laos in the B-52 aircraft carried a bomb load of approximately 52,000 pounds. In 1972, Phil Hindmiller was promoted to the rank of Captain and B-52 aircraft commander. And whereas Captain Hindmiller was awarded the following awards and commendations: The Air Force Medal, Three Oak Leaf Clusters, the Air Force Commendation Model, the Air Force Outstanding Unit Award, the Vietnam Service Medal, the Republic of Vietnam Campaign Medal, the Vietnam Cross of Gallantry, the Air Force Expeditionary Medal, the National Defense Service Medal, and Markmanship Ribbon. In 1979, Captain Hindmiller was honorably discharged by the United States Air Force after serving six years of service. And whereas we remember, the strength of our community and nation is in our collective bond to a spirit of service and that there is no higher calling than those who have served in the United States Armed Forces. Now therefore I, Kurt M. Wilson, Mayor of the City of Roswell, do hereby name Captain Philip Hindmiller, an esteemed veteran of Roswell, and call upon all our citizens to recognize his outstanding service to his country and our community.
Wasn't, didn't know I was going to speak tonight, but what the heck? It is. I wasn't.
It was?
No, the, the six years I spent in the Air Force, best six years of my life. Would have stayed, but that didn't happen. It was, it was great because of the people that I met. I loved flying. I flew the whole time I was in. Spent most of it in Southeast Asia, but still loved it. And, and due to this day, if you look at our family, my wife's father was in the Air Force for 30 years. My dad was in for 24 years. So we had a whole lot of, excuse me, and her brother was in for 20 years. So we got a whole lot of history. And I guess I was just destined to go in the Air Force because I wanted to fly. And it turned out, turned out really well, greatest six years of my life. Till I met my wife. That was close. But it was, it was absolute pleasure. I would have stayed in. Had not, not have been for a medical issue, but happens to all of us once in a while. And just a good place to be and I encourage you and your children, your family, if they're looking for a great job, Air Force is a great place to go. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Council, will you join me down here? Next on the mayor's report is the Pat Tillman Honor Run. The Pat Tillman, the Pat Tillman Honor Run is on April 23rd, that is two weeks from this past Saturday in Roswell at Riverside Park at 8:00 AM. The run-walk honors the legacy and impact of Army Ranger Pat Tillman, an American hero who was killed by friendly fire while in Afghanistan. This run-walk is 4.2 miles, which represents the Number 42 Pat Tillman war on his jersey as an NFL player. All participants will receive a medal and a race shirt highlighting this year's theme, Pushing Limits. Funds raised go to the Pat Tillman Foundation, which gives academic scholarships to our nation's active-duty service members, military veterans, or their spouses to further their careers and strengthen their communities. So I personally ask you to please go to runsignup.com to register and I ask whether you're a walker or a kind of runner like myself or a runner, come join us. We're very excited to have the Pat Tillman Honor Run in Roswell. This is our first year of many, many years to come. So I hope that all of you will come join us, whether you're a walker, like I said, or a kind of runner. Go to runsignup.com for the Pat Tillman Run on Saturday, April 23rd. The last item on the mayor's report is a discussion of the 100-day plan. You can also see the 100-day plan on the website and the City of Roswell Facebook page. As you know, you probably saw it when you came into the retunda and it is also located around every department in the entire city government of Roswell. And I was given a very special marker today from Julie Breckbill, our Community Development, our Communications Director. So she wants me to go to the 100-day plan and I think she wants me to mark something up. So I'm going to do that. So you probably know that we came out with the 100-day plan on January 24th and we are responsible for delivering, council and mayor and, and the incredible staff of our city, the 100-day plan on May the 3rd. So we're getting very, very close. So I would like to go ahead and check off a couple of things that this amazing council and staff have gotten done. There are 11 items, just to review them real quick, is that we will develop a city master plan. There's much more to that. We, if you mentioned item two, evaluate zero-based budgeting. Three, implement a comprehensive financial review. Four, create a transportation commission. Five, approve the River, the Roswell River Master Plan. Six, implement the people's calendar. Seven, activate the Arts Master Plan. Nine, sorry, eight, establish best-in-class police pay plan. Nine, establish the Oxbow Road Action Plan. Ten, approve the Master Parks Plan. I hope you'll give them a nice round of applause. The next, the next two weeks from now, I hope to bring to you several other pieces that we potentially already have checked off. We may. But tonight, what we hope is that we'll be able to check off establishing the Oxbow Road Action Plan. But I'm not gonna check it off yet because we haven't passed it. So with that, that's the end of the Hundred Day Plan presentation. Next, forgive me, is the Consent Agenda. Are there any comments or questions from council on the consent agenda? With it there being no comments or questions from council on the consent agenda, is there, are there any residents that would like to speak on the consent agenda? Seeing that I have no residents or council members that want to speak or make comments on the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember Hills, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Morrison, I have a second on approving the consent agenda. By show of hands, all in favor of approving the consent agenda tonight? Please, thank you. Unanimous? It passes. The consent agenda is approved for this evening. Thank you very much. Next is the Transportation Department. Councilmember Hall, will you read the Transportation item?
Thank you, Mayor. Transportation item number one, approval of the Oxbow Action Plan, including approval of a blanket right-of-way agreement not to exceed $270,000, approval of a change order with E.R. Snell Incorporated not to exceed $2,730,000, and approval of a budget amendment 336-422-00-04-11-22 in the amount of $2,764,000. And this will be presented by Dan Skalsky.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor and Council, members of the public. I want to begin with just a couple of items. Most of the content here was presented at committee, and I plan on going through that same information for the benefit of those who couldn't be there. Unfortunately, we were not able to have that information out ahead of committee. I also want to thank members of staff, Greg Nicholas, who's here running the slides tonight, Claire Bruce, who's our Land Acquisition Coordinator, who's also been working very hard, and Dave Cox, who you know and who's responsible for some of these graphics, as well as our legal team, Mr. Knighton, and Mr. Fisher, who all helped make this possible. Okay. We're gonna go to the overheads unless that comes back. Are we getting a signal here? Yeah, kicked on and kicked over to that. I see left is the right one. There we go. Okay. We'll do it the old-fashioned way. So what I'm gonna do tonight is just go over some background, status reports, some next steps, and move through it fairly quickly and hopefully address your and the public's questions, if there are any related to this item. So one thing that I want to touch on is the original project intent as well as safety, the obligations that we have as a T-Sploost project, since this project was voted on as part of the T-Sploost program in T-Sploost 1. We, as you all know, and the public and the media has covered, had some property acquisition and utility problems, as was summarized in the Girard and Davis Report. Construction was slow and was stopped completely in 2021 at about one-third complete. And what I'd like to do is give you an update on the status of the project as of right now as well. So one of the things that I was interested in as I looked at some of the historical information was the origins of the project. This is from the traffic study that was completed in 2011, and it basically outlines crashes at the Oxbow Road intersection in State Route 9. The arrows in here denote injuries and non-injury crashes, and basically, this is a significant amount of crashes over a three-year period that we had at the intersection. And that led to a number of recommendations. This is the recommendations from the traffic study that ultimately led to the intent of the Oxbow project. In terms of next steps, major events that have occurred to date, and this is the first time I'm gonna show this slide, I'll show it again a little later and complete the picture for everyone. We had a number of major events that contributed to the original cost of the project being $7 million, initially with the passage of T-Sploost, and then the initial step was getting our signal permit approved by the Georgia Department of Transportation in 2014. T-Sploost was approved in November of 2016. And then we had three major events that led to some significant increases in cost. The first was our issues with the hardware store. The second here in 2019 was the actual award of the contract, which came in at $5.9 million versus the budgeted $3 million. And later, another problem with the hardware store, which led to a settlement of $2.5 million. That accounts for the $15.4 million that we've invested or set aside for the project to date. And at this point, why don't we try the lecture again, Greg? And otherwise, no, actually, never mind. I think I've got it here. I want to show a little overview of the project area. And this is the original concept for the Oxbow Action Plan, or for the Oxbow project, with a few modifications, but basically, State Route 9, Oxbow Road, and this is Pleasant Hill Avenue. Each number on this chart represents a different parcel, which is one of the reasons we had issues. There are a number of parcels shown, 25 in total. And as part of the Girard and Davis Report, one of the things that was identified were a number of problems with our acquisition process and problems with individual properties. The table that's on the screen now is the summary of all of the 25 parcels, everything that was completed for each of those addresses, the owners, whether or not we had appraisals, the square footage involved, and the price that was paid when it occurred. And that's not a pretty picture, but it's been out there before. This is the summary of that entire picture, as it was presented largely in the Girard and Davis Report, with the exception of the last line item, which is one of the items we're here to talk about tonight, and that's a blanket right-of-way agreement for the remaining couple of parcels that we need to close.
Dan, can I, can I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
Can, can y'all see these with clarity, or are they blurry? They blurry? Too little?
This particular chart is rather difficult to see. Hopefully, the rest of the graphics will be better, and I apologize for the technical issues in getting that up on the screen. So moving on from, what I'd like to do is, everything that I've presented thus far is the historical picture, and we had several options for moving forward, and I want to go through those rather quickly. The first option is to try to complete the project as soon as possible, and that involves understanding and resolving all of those property issues that we've just been talking about, confirming and securing any additional agreements that are needed, and negotiating any obligations that haven't been settled yet, and finally, negotiating our change order with our contractor. That's been our primary focus over the last four months. The second option, which I want to talk about, is design modifications to the project. Could we make changes, and what can we do? Design modifications that have been discussed included a number of ideas, but unfortunately, we do have some serious constraints on the Oxbow project, and one is T-Sploost state law. The law basically obligates the city to complete projects as intended under T-Sploost. The second point here is the Department of Transportation's signal permit, which also applies some constraints as well. And the net result of those is that if we were to make any significant design changes to the project, it would be at least two years of a delay, in that we would be running back in the design process, and we're currently in construction. There are also other potential conflicts, and that includes potential for other obligations and conflicts, as well as unforeseen conditions. The third option that we did consider was just stopping the project. Again, state law is a problem here, as well as our challenge with, we have an unsafe intersection, it's incomplete, it's not safe now, and that's a problem. And the other conflicts that I just mentioned are also still applicable. So this gets to the point of, we're in construction, and that is not the best time to really try to change a project, because we have a good bit of design money that's been spent already. We do not have an active designer on the project, it's being done by staff primarily, and we have an active contractor. It's just not our best opportunity to influence the cost or the direction of the project without incurring additional risk. Once we're in construction, this is just something I'd like everybody to keep in mind, it's extremely important to keep that contractor moving, or will add to our current risk exposure. So in terms of next steps to complete the project, this outlines those next steps. And we're here on April 11th, hopefully to discuss the change order terms and the right-of-way completion agreements. And if we do this, we can mobilize the contractor in late April or May and be substantially complete by October of 2023, and comply with everyone's intent of getting this project behind us as soon as possible, and hopefully well in advance of the Christmas 2023 deadline that this mayor and council have set. But back to the question of what can we do to maybe enhance the project and meet some of the goals that people have expressed an interest in, most clearly from this mayor and council and the citizens that I've spoken to, traffic calming in Roswell is a top priority. And we wanted to try to do as much as possible as part of this project to do just that. And we've done quite a bit. So we've been able to reduce the lane widths on Oxbow Road, add some textured pavement, as well as add some median islands, and enlarge in the landscape buffer, which is highlighted here, as well as add textured crosswalks to help with pedestrian and traffic calm. So in short, we've tried to do as much as the constraints that T-Sploost and our permit with the state for the intersection would allow us to do, as well as just wise utilization of the available funding that we have, to do as much to enhance the project as we could at this stage of the game, without running into those constraints. And I showed you this before, the cost to complete, and this is the real reason we're here tonight, is to request consideration of additional funding for the project, and I'll come back to this in a moment on our closing slide, and it's also summarized in the actual agenda item for tonight's item. And that is to approve a total of $3 million of additional funding. A portion of that is for additional right-of-way and easement agreements, and $2.73 million is for construction contract-related items. So this summary presents it, and I don't think we're gonna be able to show the aerial in the animation form, but this is Oxbow back in September of 2018, and this is the old hardware store. The new view for this same location is shown here, so the new alignment comes over and loops out. And finally, I want to show you from the opposite direction a view of Oxbow Road looking to the west. And finally, implement this plan. The ultimate request outlined in tonight's agenda is summarized here, and I wanted to show this because this is the only new material from committee that public has not had an opportunity to see yet. The $270,000 is for the blanket right-of-way. The construction contract is the vast majority of the funding. We do- as well as add some median islands, and enlarge in the landscape buffer, which is highlighted here, as well as add textured crosswalks to help with pedestrian and traffic calm. So, in short, we've tried to do as much as the constraints that T-SLOSS and our permit with the state for the intersection would allow us to do, as well as just wise utilization of the available funding that we have, to do as much to enhance the project as we could at this stage of the game, without running into those constraints. And I showed you this before, the cost to complete, and this is the real reason we're here tonight, is to request consideration of additional funding for the project, and I'll come back to this in a moment on our closing slide, and it's also summarized in the actual agenda item for tonight's item. And that is to approve a total of $3 million of additional funding. A portion of that is for additional right-of-way and easement agreements, and 2.73 million is for construction contract-related items. So, this summary presents it, and I don't think we're going to be able to show the aerial in the animation form, but this is Oxbow back in September of 2018, and this is the old hardware store. The new view for this same location is shown here, so the new alignment comes over and loops out. And finally, I want to show you, from the opposite direction, a view of Oxbow Road looking to the west. And finally, implement this plan. The ultimate request outlined in tonight's agenda is summarized here, and I wanted to show this, because this is the only new material from committee that public has not had an opportunity to see yet. The 270,000 is for the blanket right-of-way. The construction contract is the vast majority of the funding. We do have an early completion incentive of $100,000, and hopefully, that'll incentivize the contractor to finish much earlier than October of 2023. And we do have a small allowance for unforeseen conditions on the site, and any additional surprises that may come up. The total budget request is $3 million, and the financial impact, I wanted to emphasize, we do have $236,000, $237,000 in the current project budget, so that explains the ask of, I believe it's 2,270,000 of additional funding, which is available in our T-SLOSS funds. If there's any good news here, it's that the revenues from T-SLOSS have increased substantially, as COVID has wound down, and there is sufficient funding in T-SLOSS One monies to cover the requested amount. So, I apologize for the technical difficulties, but I'll be happy to address any questions that you or the public may have.
Dan, can I ask you a question? Would you do me a favor? Can you pull up packet page 42, item, it's the spreadsheet, it's the spreadsheet with the, all the parcels and easements, the acquisition easements and parcel? Yeah, I don't know, we can't make this any clearer, can we, unfortunately? Just, so, one of the things that I want to make sure everybody knows, all of this information will be released to everybody, to the public, it will be public information. And I think one of the things that I was very excited about when Dan and his team put this together, they essentially compiled all the information from the Gerard and Davis report, and made it very discernible. So, what this is, is this is every parcel and every easement that we acquired, the city acquired during the Oxbow process, and it shows, basically, the errors of the city. And one of the things I'm very proud of is that the city, the willingness of Dan and his team, and this council, and Randy and their team, the willingness to say, is to make our mistakes transparent. One, is to be fully visible; two, to create processes to really learn from. And so, this packet page 42, this particular spreadsheet, to me, is very, very important, because it shows, I think, the willingness of this leadership team to be incredibly honest, to be incredibly transparent, and to show, look, when this city screws up, we're going to show it in very clear terms, so that we know, one, that there's nothing to hide, and, two, that we're going to learn from those mistakes. So, packet page 42, when I first saw this from Dan, the first time he released it, we met on it, it was just so impressive. It also takes, basically, this is the Gerard and Davis report in consumable matter, from my perspective, you know, I don't want to simplify it, but if you haven't read the Gerard and Davis report, this is ostensibly much of it, right here in this spreadsheet. And Dan, I can't tell you. The second thing I want to say, and I know, I think the council is probably going to say the same thing, so I apologize for sounding like, I'm going to sound like an echo chamber. But for three months, for 100 days ostensibly, since we came in on January the 2nd, you know, we made Oxbow Action Plan, this leadership team, this council, met with Randy Knighton, met with Dan, met with the rest of the team, met with Michael Fisher, and were very clear about the urgency of getting on Oxbow. Well, everybody, starting with Dan, did, just did such a remarkable job, and your team, and it's so easy to overstate what happened, when in reality, it's going to be, this Oxbow Action Plan is an incredible accomplishment by Dan and his team. The fact that we're presenting this to you, our fellow residents, to our city, to our business community here on April the 11th, is a remarkable achievement. And the fact that if we, if this council approves it tonight, we'll be moving dirt within 30 days. And as we've said, this project will be completed by, if approved tonight, by December of 2023. I'm a big believer in under-promising and over-delivering. If you look at it, there's an incentive in this plan, so the original completion of this project is October. I believe in saying, look, let's get it done by Christmas, so that you're going to keep saying me, "Christmas 2023 is the date." We internally are going to push much harder to get it much sooner than that to you, but that's why you're going to keep hearing us saying, "Christmas 2023." There's an incentive, there's also a penalty if it's not done by October. So, Dan brought in the incentive, but just FYI, I just want to let you know, as being a steward of your money, there's also a penalty if it's not done by October. So, Dan, massive, massive credit, I can't, I wish to, I wish I could bring some criticism towards you for forcing me to become an expert on Oxbow, but I can't, I can just celebrate you. I wish we had a band here to celebrate your efforts and your team's efforts, and Randy and your team's efforts, and this council's efforts. And I can't tell you what a big deal this is to my fellow residents. It's an amazing accomplishment to see your government work at this kind of speed, this kind of urgency, this kind of competency. And so, somebody's, Janet's telling me to wave it up, so I guess she wants me off the stage, so I can, so, Dan, I can't thank you enough, and well done, sir. Council, any other thoughts, questions, or comments? Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dan and your team. And I just, in addition to everything that Mayor Wilson has just said, the other big, big, primary focus in not only getting this plan done, the biggest focus was how to make this better, in what we had to work with. And I think that Dan and your team have done a tremendous amount of work in identifying traffic calming and improvements to this project, everything that we could do within the legal scope, without delaying it two to five years, by, you know, trying to obtain another permit. So, I just want to applaud you, and I want the public to know the efforts that went into that as well.
Thank you, Christine. Councilmember Vanstrom.
Yeah, I'd just like you to, Dan, if you could put up the three options that you had, please. And what I'd like to call that, actually, is the three options that you have had memorized for months and months, and have been working so hard on, and I greatly appreciate that, because I want everyone to understand that this council and this mayor worked tirelessly with this great staff that we have here at Roswell, looking at these three options. What would work? What could we do? What could we get away with and make this project better, and still have this project completed, and still have a project that our residents will be proud of? And I just wanted to thank Dan publicly for that. If there's one thing that you could also do, and thanking David at the same time from legal, just review one more time how T-SLOSS law and interrupting T-SLOSS really would have impacted where we stand today, whether you or David want to do that, if it could be helpful.
Yeah, I would begin by just putting up an image of the initial project extents for discussion, or for, at least for everyone's information. So, for the most part, this is the outline of the project extents as they were defined to the voters during the T-SLOSS One vote, in terms of the extents of the roadway in particular. And my understanding from Mr. Davidson, and what I've learned about T-SLOSS requirements, is we are obligated to complete that project substantially as it was described in the voter referendum. And within the confines of those, that fence line, if you will, we were able to make some adjustments in all of the traffic calming elements, but in terms of the roadway boundaries, extent, the curb, the gutter, all of that, and particularly, the intersection at State Route 9, where we have two constraints, both what we promised to the voters, and what we have a permit to do within Georgia Department of Transportation's right-of-way, those are the two primary constraints. Mr. Davidson, if you'd like to add anything to that.
No, I would just like to add that Dan and his staff have done an incredible job with this, and he is absolutely correct in that, within the boundaries, he has been able to work some magic with traffic calming, but as far as the extent of what the project has to do, it needs to be what the voters voted on, and this is that project.
Yes, sir.
Just one more follow-up. Biggest question that I have remaining, that I have asked before, is looking at all these little squares with numbers on them, which are all those little areas we had to take care of and secure, and get in writing that we're moving forward. Do you feel very, very confident at this point that we've dotted most of the i's and crossed most of the t's? Because I know we have worked so hard to do that, and I want the public to know how hard we have worked to do that. I know it can't go perfectly, but I just think you guys have done yeoman's work to get us to the point where this project should proceed without further interruption that can't be handled.
Yes, sir. The answer is 100%. There are a few unresolved items, and all of those unresolved items are parcels or properties that would not impact the completion of the project.
Yes, sir.
Could I make one more comment, just a general one?
Please, Dan.
For the benefit of the public, the other thing that this project has brought forward is the need for a lot of procedural updates within the department. I just wanted this council and the public to understand, while we're not talking about them in great detail tonight, all of the issues that have been identified in the Gerard and Davis report, which we've been working on since last October, are being addressed in terms of our internal procedures and processes, and many had been addressed by the time the report had come public, but all of those are being addressed in the way we do business, the way we acquire right-of-way, the way we work with utilities, and rest assured, this will not be a recurring problem. And we'll be happy to brief the council at any point in time on those updated processes and procedures.
Councilmember Hills, Councilmember Mortland, comments, thoughts, questions? Councilmember Mortland? Dan, we'll come back to you in a minute, I'm sure. Since council has asked their thoughts or questions, are there any comments from Roswell residents who would like to speak on this item? One at a time, yes, please. And please limit your comments to five minutes, so please, please join us, and tell us who you are and where you live.
Hi, my name is Mary Rogesha, and I live at 2900 Roethsburg Drive in Roswell. And I would just appreciate everything that's online. I might make one recommendation, having just dealt with some very large budget issues with the state level, is online, possibly let the citizens know, where is this budget amendment? Where's the money being taken from to pay for this, so that expectations are set as to what may or may not be delayed in other parts of the city, just so we all know and have open and transparency in regards to the money of our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, sir. Please share us who you are and where you live.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Frederick Wiener. I live 145, along Water Cove, in Roswell, of course. By the way, if I read the record after today, I think you pronounced the word transparent twice.
Yes, sir.
So, anyways, I want to highlight a few points. The first one is that the report highlights some significant errors. But what is absent from the report, or at least from this summary, is the accountability. Who has created those errors, and as we are paying for them? Who really is going to be accountable and be found at fault, and when do we do something about it? But anyways, the important point for me is that the genesis of the project is somewhere saying there was a pretty significant issue with traffic accidents. But then I see that on the map, that we also have created a couple of parallel streets to Atlanta Streets as part of this project. So, I'm not, I still don't understand why we needed to do that, to improve that very intersection, and who really has benefited from these additional roads. And along the lines of this, I see no traffic pattern that could improve the traffic along Atlanta Street. So, to my point is, and also to my disappointment, there is another traffic light that is going to be put at the intersection of Oxbow and Atlanta Street. And that traffic light is, actually, I looked today, this afternoon, it's 220 feet away from Sloan Street, but I was looking at Oxbow today, now that it's going to be, the intersection's going to be a little bit further south, it's probably 180 feet, so about 15 cars. And it's hardly possible to manage 120, Sloan Street, now Oxbow, then Oak, then, anyway, there are just too many traffic lights. So, what are we doing as part of this project to improve the traffic flow significantly, so that those two additional roads that are built are used in ways that are going to improve the traffic? So, not everybody will have to take those right turn, left turn, straight, and whatnot, and just try to make this traffic flow more effective, because that's really what we want to do ultimately, in addition to reducing the accidents. One last point that I wanted to, or two points, one is on the traffic calming Oxbow, and the picture that you show is actually the traffic calming solution that was put on Riverside. I happen to be walking on Riverside just about every other day, at that crosswalk precisely to go from the park to Martin's Landing. And I tell you that 50% of the time, even with the lights flashing, you better not put your foot on the street until you know that the car is coming, is stopping, because they were not. So, the traffic calming solution, as it is shown there, and as it's thought about, is actually not very effective. Riverside is 35 miles an hour, but it's a long stretch of road, and people are going for blast. And I know that from a pedestrian point of view, as well as from a bicyclist's point of view. And then lastly, we're going to have Atlanta Street occupied with the project until the end of 2023. Meanwhile, the road has deteriorated to a point, because I drive on it, to a point where it damages everything on your car, damages tires, suspension, whatnot. Are we going to do anything to fix the road during the time, or until the time that the project is completed? And that would be quite helpful. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Please let everybody know who you are and where you live.
Janet Russell, a complicated resident of Roswell since 1973. Good evening, and Dan, I think, deserves sainthood, picking up this pile of crap that he's been left with. There's no other way to describe it, except perhaps if we wanted to go to Ukraine and see what Putin has done to a railway station, that's what it looks like. Now, I live about a fourth of a mile from there, so when you look on paper and see the destruction, or the inconvenience, people that live in the east side of town, or live in Brookfield, or live in Horseshoe Bend, have absolutely no idea the hell that the people who live there have gone through since January of 2020. No through-street, and all the traffic has been diverted. Add that to the Willeyo Road Bridge construction, and we have lived in a mess for two years. But on paper, it just looks like an inconvenience. So, I just wanted you to know, Dan, that first picture that you showed, the very first one that showed the project as it was imagined, the imaginary one, I attended all the meetings because I live there, yeah, that one, thank you. And thank you very much. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of insight. First of all, the people that owned that hardware store knew 10 years ago that this project was happening, and that's why they stopped being a real hardware store and started selling big green eggs. They hadn't been a hardware store in years. They saw the money coming, and they played this city like a fool. And I stood right here, next to the previous, previous director of transportation, when he mentioned out of the corner of his mouth, that not only had we were paying them $2.5 million for the hardware store, which if a strong wind came, would have blown it down, we were giving them the land where the Oxbow Road currently exists. It was a gift. And I stood here and said to him, so did we value it at $1 or $1.5 million? And I stood here and said to him, so did we value it at $1 or $1.5 million? Because for tax purposes, they ought to know, anything over $10,000 has got tax liability if it's a gift. Later in that week, I got a message saying, well, it wasn't really a gift, it was an exchange, which in the Gerard Report tells us that it was an illegal thing. The city broke a law. Surprise. We all agreed, those of us that have lived here for a long time, that that is an unsafe intersection. Blind hill, blind curve, probably from horse and buggy days. We get it. It only needed a signal. Don't tell me that GDOT won't allow signals because you just proved it right up here. You put a signal with a pedestrian crosswalk within 50 yards of two signals with pedestrian crosswalks on the same state highway and you accomplished it in four weeks. Four weeks! I remind you, it only took 50, let's see, 60 months to build the Golden Gate Bridge. We're at 48 months if this can get stopped. On this map, but I hope I can show it, I'm not very good, I've never done this part before, this little part that runs over here to the Presbyterian Church, sometime between 2004 and 2008, the Presbyterian Church did a very large construction project on their property. And one of the conditions of that construction was that they would pay for any sidewalks on that project, because this was already on the books. They weren't given, they weren't given, you know, an exemption. It was simply a deferral. I mentioned it to Tu, I mentioned it to Mohammed when he was there and he goes, that was a long time ago. I said, doesn't matter. It was a condition of the construction of their church and I expect the city to make the church pay for that. They didn't get an exemption. I get pretty strong on that because doggone it, nobody seems to remember anything unless it benefits themselves. I'm also very astonished that we bought land from somebody that didn't own it. I have lots of land I don't own that I will be glad to sell you! If I buy a used car and I hand somebody a check, I expect the title in my hand at the same time. Who the world buys land from somebody that doesn't do due diligence in a title search? And how is that individual allowed to now start another construction project a fourth of a mile away when he's filed bankruptcy and says he doesn't have to pay us back? Just curious. I can show you where the project is if you all want to know. I just don't get it. The other thing is this, this road that's gonna go through to Mimosa is going to create such pressure on Mimosa Boulevard, because if you think anybody going home to East Cobb is gonna turn left to wait at a light at Sloan, to wait at a light at 120, to turn right, you need to upgrade what you're smoking. Because they're gonna cut through Norcross and turn left or right on Mimosa, it's already a mess at Magnolia and they're gonna turn right on 120 and it's gonna be a wreck. So you better hire some more ambulances. Stop the project, put in a light and let's just move on.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Russell. Yes, sir. Please share with us your name and where you live.
George Vale, 145 Kings Mill Court in the Mill Village. Can you not stop, start my, Matt pause while I get this plugged in?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. There's a mic here. Okay. Good. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I really appreciate the, the energy to get things done in the 100 Day Plan. And I know most of you weren't on, the majority of you weren't on council when this project was conceived and started working. So I really appreciate you taking the time. What we have here is the Oxbow project. It's an unsignalized intersection, as Mr. Skouski talked about. I'm gonna give a little bit of a history lesson just to get everybody up to speed. Currently, there's, these are the lights that currently exist. It's interesting how there's a light at Oak Street, a light at Sloan Street, which was actually the first traffic light in all of Roswell, and then obviously at 120. But why was there never a light traffic signal put at Oxbow? Since Mrs. Skouski mentioned, the data shows that those most dangerous intersections of all of Roswell. We all know what this project's about. This project is about moving East Cobb commuters to Georgia 400 and 400 back to East Cobb. This is not a Roswell city project. What was sold in the project description was a safety project. It's a safety issue at that intersection. That's really what this project is about. The reason why there was never, in my mind, a traffic signal put at this location is that you need what is called a project justification for a transportation project to move forward. That project justification are accidents generally showing the need for a signal. So over 20 to 30 years, the city of Roswell did not put a traffic signal there to justify a larger project. They had a bigger idea rather than a traffic signal at this location. So in effect, the city is culpable for all the accidents over the last 20 to 30 years that have occurred here, just to justify a future project such as this. A traffic signal, if you wanted to put one in, today's dollars, is $250,000 to $500,000. That's to put one in today. You could put a temporary one in there today. I mean, literally, go put a couple of guide wires up, put it up, connect it up, Dan could probably put it up pretty quickly. Let me just go back a little bit of history. Back in 2000, the original project that the city proposed to Georgia DOT was a $2.6 million project for a signal with some turning lanes at that location. That was it, $2.6 million at 2006 time. So this is really what the first project was conceived. As you all know, what was passed a T-SLOSS was five, six to seven million dollars, depending on what sign you read. This is the current sign that's up there. The project was obviously sold for a $7 million. But now it's $18.4 million. For a traffic signal, really, really, that's what we needed, right? A traffic signal. That's 212,000, 212% over budget. Just to let everybody understand what we're talking about. As Janet mentioned, this new project will induce traffic onto what is Mimosa Boulevard, but was historically Roswell's main street as originally plotted by the city of Roswell at that time. So Mimosa Boulevard is our historic main street and now we'll have induced traffic from East Cobb and Georgia 400. And you've created two unsignalized intersections in the making. So you've had an unsignalized location, now you made two unsignalized locations. You're gonna basically add, eventually have to add a signal in on Mimosa because of all the traffic and the volumes associated with that in the future, induced demand. In addition, I just want to relate that three historic properties were demolished during this time period. Roswell DOT is not required to actually do any, get in front of HPC for this project or any project, even though this project right here, the cut through to the Mill Village, actually appears as the historic district. So there actually is, there's no HPC oversight. Over 135 people signed a petition to stop the cut through into the Mill Village. Finally, the Jared Davis Report, as you mentioned, the question that I have is, have all the recommendations been implemented? Before this project moves forward, we should make sure that the whole, all the recommendations by that, that report are implemented. I'm running out of time. These are the questions I have. What is the future state of the land?
Thank you, Mr. Vale. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I have just 30 seconds?
No, sir. Thank you, though. Yes, ma'am. Please share us with your, us your name and where you live in Roswell.
Hello, my name is Denise Hannahan and I live in the same neighborhood as George Vale. And we've been dealing with the Transportation Department since this project started. And right now, we are still living in a war zone. I mean, it's just a mess over there between that and the whole Sloan Trail that's never been, from Sloan to Oxbow, that's never been completed. And we're on budget overrun. It's been at the, in the Atlanta AGC. I think that out of the three choices, the only reasonable choice is to reevaluate this. I just don't think that you can say, well, we've spent this much money and we're on budget overrun, we're just gonna go with it, with what we have. I think this whole project needs to be readdressed and relooked at, because the way it stands now, it's not what the people want. It's, it's just a, it's a travesty. You're rerouting all this traffic going through Mill Village and over on Mimosa where all those historic places are, and there's no reason for it. So my suggestion is to look at Plan Number Two on the three, three issues there. So that's my two cents.
Thank you very much. Any other thoughts or comments from Roswell residents? Yes, sir. Jason, please share with everybody your name and where you live.
I'm Jason Yowell, 510 Old Oak Trace. I, I, I want to first say that I really appreciate your effort to get Oxbow back on track as quickly as possible. I'd just like to say that there, there are some lies that are so famous that they've become a joke, like the check is in the mail, I'll respect you in the morning, I'm from the government and I am here to help you, and this project is all about improving safety. The thing about traffic is if you talk to the people at UPS and ask them, how do you program your GPS for directions? And they will tell you, we program our directions to eliminate every possible left-hand turn movement we can, because left-hand turn movements are where accidents happen. And this, this is, this isn't, this doesn't improve safety. I think if the plan is implemented as, as it's been presented, you're gonna see a U-curve. You know, the accidents before, the accidents now, and the accidents after are gonna start to have an upward tick. If it's really about safety, you don't want an intersection there. It's, it's a terrible place for an intersection. It, it doesn't improve anything. And as far as, you know, I understand the T-SLOSS says, oh, you have to have an actual intersection south of the existing intersection. But it also says, and there should be a connection between the Mill Village and Oxbow. Doesn't say there has to be a legal street, just says there has to be a connection. Could have been a multipurpose path. I know that Public Safety has made a big thing about, oh, well, you know, the end of Maple Street, we have to have that connection there to get fire vehicles in and out safely. Well, the city already owns a full-on right-of-way at the end of Maple that connects to Sloan Street. What do we put there? We put a multipurpose path. We could have put a real street, it wouldn't be in any danger of becoming a cut through, but that cut through to the Mill Village costs a lot of money. Among the things it cost was right-of-way acquisition, you know, we bought twice. And we still don't know what's going on in terms of recouping the money from the first purchase of that particular set of right-aways. I mean, I really, I know, I know you want to get it done and I know you want to get it done quick. But this, there are improvements. I love seeing the lanes narrowing down to 10 feet. I don't think there's any reason for us to have anything wider than a 10-foot lane going forward on any road improvement project. And that's a, that's a step in the right direction and I, and I applaud you for that. But the, you know, when I, when I look at the, at this map, is there a way to turn this, this back on so that it comes up there? Because it's, it's good to go. And, and this is, this is not, there we go. Okay. This, this building right here, that's Doc's Cafe. And as you can see, that's right between the original road and the new road. I don't understand why Doc's Cafe was moved. Could have stayed right where it was. Now, now, this isn't on you. This is on the previous administration. When you look at the list of all the right-of-way acquisitions and then they talk about the sunk cost of, well, we've already got all this design work. Well, the problem with the process with transportation engineers is they do a full-on design and then go, what do we need to make it work? And what, the thing that drives me crazy is they turn off different layers in the CAD drawing. They turn off the property lines, they turn off the tree, the survey, they turn off the topo lines.
Thank you, Mr. Yowell. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Time's up. Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am? Please share with us who you are and where you live.
Maggie McClanahan, 145 Roswell Farm Circle. I just am wondering what happened to the change order from September that was for 616-802 and why the change order now is different? That item was deferred at committee.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Dan? Absolutely. Feel free. Please, sir.
I apologize, we may not get to all of the comments, but there were a couple that I think we can address here. And let me start with Representative Robishaw about the source of the funding. So 100% of the funds that we are asking for tonight are available in the T-SLOSS 1 account with no additional impacts outside of T-SLOSS 1. We have one other T-SLOSS 1 project, which is Big Creek Parkway. But at this point, funds are available that are not committed to other projects. On the accountability point, I would just go back to my comments about addressing our internal procedures and all of the staff that are here with us today understand those procedures and we're reinforcing those through our project management training program, which we've been working on over the past several months. Again, I may not hit all of the points, but I want to hit a couple in particular. The, I think Ms. Russell and Mr. Vale both made the comment that just a signal was necessary. And I would dispute that point, respectfully disagree with both of them. The key point that I think is problematic for that approach is the old alignment is here and here's the other side of what was Oxbow. GDOT just wouldn't permit just a signal at that location. I don't believe it could have been done safely with the misalignment that was there between those two streets. And I'm absolutely sure it would not have been permitted by the state. And that's one of the reasons that the intersection was redone further to the south to address that alignment issue. So just again, a respectful disagreement that just a signal is all that was required. I believe we did go through the Historic Preservation Commission, if I'm not mistaken, Greg, that was, I think, just one comment that I would take exception to. I think that was Mr. Vale. In terms of the reevaluation, I think that is something you all could consider, but I would would go back to the comments that I made regarding Option Two in general, and that that has significant risk implications for the city. Both in terms of T-Slot One compliance, or just the state law compliance in general, as well as a significant delay, which means the site is going to look like it does now for much longer, I'm afraid. And one thing I have heard from all of the property owners that we've been dealing with, as well as a number of others, is that they would really like to get this back to a presentable state as soon as possible. And I believe, what happened to the change order? Mr. Yell made the comment that the safety point is a lie. That's just a big statement. I would say, the only other correction I want to make to the record is that Mr. Vale stated that we said this was the most dangerous intersection in Roswell. I don't believe that's been stated ever, and I wouldn't make that claim now. It is a dangerous, it was a dangerous intersection, but we certainly have some other ones along Holcomb Bridge Road that have been more problematic and dangerous. The last comment was the question from Ms. McClanahan about the change order. That item was, again, deferred, and that's the reason the current change order is being presented, is it is including everything required to complete the project. It's not clear to me that the change order that was in the works in August, September of last year could make that particular commitment to you all. I think it was Councilmember Hall, who at committee asked me point-blank, "How can we be sure that this is going to be the last time that we need to make an adjustment for funds?" And I think that's one of the things we tried to address in this, is make sure that we have all of the problems addressed and a path forward that we're confident in. So I'm not sure that that's all of the comments, but I wanted to at least take a stab at the ones that I thought we could address.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you very much. Counsel? Any other comments? Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, and thank you again, Dan. I have a question. So once the project, once we complete this project, and some time goes by, and we observe some perhaps things that are dangerous, or maybe not in the best interest of our residents on our Roswell streets, like an Elm Street or a Oxbow Road extension, or even Oxbow Road or Pleasant Hill, does the city have options at that point to make changes outside of the project once this project has been completed?
Yes, Councilmember Hall. That's my understanding. There's always the potential to adjust signal timing, other potential measures that we might want to do, certainly striping and control of...
Directionality?
Yes, potentially as well.
Thank you.
I wanted to put this slide back up for just a second, partly in response to that, but also to make the point about traffic calming going into the historic district. I don't think I showed this when we were talking earlier, but a lot of that is concentrated on the western portion of Oxbow Road. So that when people get off of State Route Nine and they head on Oxbow Road towards Mimosa, or even towards Grimes Bridge, they're saying, "Hey, you're not on a state route anymore. You're entering the historic district if you're going towards Mimosa." And a lot of the traffic calming areas that we've added to the project are in that corridor. And it's basically saying, "Slow down, folks. You're entering the historic district. Roswell wants you to move slow here."
Dan, to that point, leave that slide back up, because you did not show that slide earlier in the presentation. So what was the direction that you were given by this council and staff? What has been the directive in terms of all this? And can you point out some of the distinctions here of how this is different than the original, than the project that was on the board, let's say, four months ago?
Virtually everything that you see called out in blue, the potential median islands, one of those was definitely included. We are potentially finding a place for two more. The landscape buffer all along the northern portion of Oxbow Road between Mimosa, all the way to State Route Nine, and then picking up again all the way down to Pleasant Hill Avenue, that's been widened substantially. The road narrowing, the lane width narrowing is all along this section. And we have textured crosswalks at this intersection, Pleasant Hill and Oxbow, as well as this intersection at Mimosa and Oxbow. And this orange section is textured pavement, which is intended to send, you know, an audible and physical kind of message to drivers once they hit that pavement in that section between Mimosa and State Route Nine. Those are the largest components. And basically, the message was, "Get as much traffic calming into this project as we can fit and manage in compliance with the constraints that we can't change."
How wide are those lanes between Oxbow, on Oxbow, between Pleasant Hill and Highway Nine? How wide are those lanes?
Those are all 10. Those are all 10-foot lanes. And they were 11 previously. They've been narrowed to make the bike lane wider.
And how long are the third lane medians? How much space is there in the turning lane? How much room do we leave?
Those are 11, I believe, 10 to 11.
And how wide are the bike and pedestrian lanes?
Three to four lanes on each side.
They're five, aren't they?
They've gone to five.
They're five. And then, how wide are the buffers on the north side of Oxbow between Pleasant Hill and Highway Nine?
That's five feet as well, sir.
So, and the distinction between that and the original project is what, from your perspective, as originally designed?
Colors don't show up quite as well here, but this has been increased up to five. This has been increased to three. This has been cut from 11 to 10, and that's the same on both sides. We pulled lanes out of the, pulled space out of the traffic lanes and put it into buffer and bike lanes.
Any other thoughts, comments, or questions from counsel? Councilman Vanstrom?
Just real quick, and I'm commenting on the word "quick." Jason, you mentioned not to act too quickly. And then Denise, you also mentioned that you'd like to see us reevaluate this. I just want to reassure you that since our election in November, we have been reevaluating, and reevaluating, and reevaluating, and working hard. So we have, do feel very confident that we have reevaluated. And very, very confident, I feel very confident, that we're putting the best foot forward that we can put on this project and get it completed for all of us.
Counsel? Any other thoughts or questions? Dan, any final statements?
I appreciate all of the comments. We've tried to address what we can, and I would hope that we would move forward with completing the project as soon as possible, per staff's recommendations. And with that...
Thanks for all your work, Dan. Thank you. Councilmember Hall, do you have a motion on the approval of the Oxbow Action Plan?
Yes, Mayor. Motion to approve transportation item number one, the Budget Amendment 33642200041122, in the amount of $2,764,000.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Do I have a second on the matter? Councilmember Vanstrom, thank you for the second on the matter. By a show of hands, all in favor of the approval of the Oxbow Action Plan as stated, please raise your hands. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we move to community development. Councilmember Vanstrom, would you read the first community development item tonight?
Be glad to, Mayor. Approval of the Final Platte 20214813 for five townhouse lots, Greenwood Village on Green Street. Ms. Diebel, planning and zoning director.
I'm getting the laptop working again. Where it goes? Forgot that. So this is the final plat for the Green Street project. A little background on final plats, plats in general. They go under subdivision review, under the Unified Development Code, Section 13.5. Any major plat that requires acceptance of dedication of land and public improvements to the city are required to go through this process. It is a two-step process with a preliminary plat and a final plat. This was started back in 2018, when Planning Commission approved the preliminary plat. And the final plat was found to be in conformance by all staff on March 18th of 2022. And it is here before you tonight on April 11th, in order to receive approval from the mayor council for acceptance of the right-of-way. This is the final plat showing the five townhouses that are on the property. This is actually a zoomed-in portion to show you the dedication of the right-of-way that you will be accepting this evening. Staff does recommend approval of the final plat. It has been reviewed by all departments, and we recommend approval. Do you have any questions for staff?
Jackie, thank you. Let me just say to, for the record going forward, I screwed up. This approval for this final plat should have been on the agenda for tonight. I mistakenly put another plat approval and two other items on the committee. So going forward, as a matter of record, plats will come directly to council meetings rather than going to committee. That's been the longstanding tradition, and I mistakenly changed that last week in our meeting review. So just as a matter of record, there is another plat that should have been on the meeting, should have been on the agenda tonight. It's not on. It's my fault. We did get this one in, but just for the record, you will see plat approvals come directly to council and mayor meetings and not go to committee meetings. So I just want to make that clarification. Does counsel have any thoughts or questions of Ms. Diebel on this matter?
No thoughts or questions from counsel. Is there anyone from the public who's a Roswell resident would like to speak on the matter? That being said, Councilmember Vanstrom, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. A motion to approve the final plat 20214813 for five townhouse lots, Greenwood Village on Green Street.
Thank you, Councilman Vanstrom. Do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Mortland. I have a second. All those in favor of the approval of final plat 20214813, please raise your hands. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Onto the next item on the agenda. Councilmember Vanstrom, will you read the next community development item?
I will. Thank you. Approval of a text amendment to the Unified Development Code regarding the RM2 residential multifamily and RM3 residential multifamily zoning districts. It's a first reading. Please, Mrs. Diebel.
Actually, David Davidson, would you please read the ordinance?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code by modifying Article Four, Corridor and Nose Districts, Section 4.5.2 Use Table, and Article 13, Section 13.4.3, who can submit an application. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the City of Roswell, Georgia pursuant to their authority to hereby amend Article Four, Corridor and Nose Districts, Section 4.5.2 Use Table, and Article 13, Section 13.4.3, who can submit an application, letter D, of the Unified Development Code, the text of which is incorporated herein by reference and if approved, this would be the first reading.
Peter, now?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Diebel, and if you could explain to the audience first reading process?
We've got that in here. So a little background on this item. It went to the committee in January of 2022, and then it was initiated by the mayor and city council on February 14th at the mayor and council meeting. It was heard by the planning commission on March 15th of 2022. It is here this evening for a first reading, and possibly a second reading, tentative, if approved by the mayor and council, to be heard by you at the April 26, 2022 meeting. So in order to explain a first reading and a second reading, so text amendments are brought forward and discussed by the mayor and council to staff. They're discussed at committee meetings, as stated here in January, and they can go back and forth for a while, sometimes at one meeting, sometimes it could take a couple of months. Once they are approved by the committee in order to be placed on an agenda, they come forward for an initiation. Once it's been initiated, it's advertised, and it goes before the planning commission, which is a recommending body, and they make a recommendation on all text amendments that are brought forward to the mayor and council. At the first reading, the mayor and council can make changes. They can ask questions, make changes, and approve the first reading and move it on if they so choose to do so. And then it moves to second reading. Once it's approved at second reading, it is adopted and made part of the code. So this is the first portion of the proposed text amendment for Section 4.5.2. It is to remove letter C from the multifamily use category of the RX, which is the residential mixed-use zoning classification, and adding the dotted line that shows it is prohibited use. In the Unified Development Code, that dotted line indicates prohibited uses. So this is the table currently. As you can see, under multifamily, the red C would be removed, and it would just have the line placed in it if it's approved by the mayor and council. The second part of the text amendment is under Section 13.4.3, letter D. Currently in the code, we have what's stated here, other than what's in red. So it states, "No amendment to the official zoning map for the Unified Development Code shall be made, and no applications for such official zoning map amendments shall be accepted by the city involving a request to rezone in the future development map designation of suburban residential in the following zoning districts, RS6, RS4, RCC, and RTH," that currently exists today. What you're proposing to add by this text amendment is what is red, estate residential, neighborhood residential, and active neighborhoods. These are new, two of them are new character areas that were adopted as part of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The estate residential character area did exist, but it was not included in this prior to this text amendment. These are the character areas. As you can see, outlined in the red box up there, there are the established residential areas. Those are the areas in the blue, the estate residential, suburban, neighborhood residential, and the darkest blue, which kind of looks like a blue-black, is active neighborhoods. The second part of the section in 13.4.3 is brand-new. It states, "To no amendment to the official zoning map for the UDC shall be made, and no applications for such official zoning map amendments shall be accepted by the city involving a request to rezone to the following districts, RM2 and RM3." And these are both, as you stated, residential multifamily zoning classifications. Staff does recommend approval of the first reading of the text amendment to the UC, Section 4.5.2, the Use Table, and Section 13.4.3, who can submit an application, letter D. This was heard, as I stated, at the planning commission last month. The planning commission separated their recommendation into three different parts. The planning commission denied the removal of letter C from the RX Use Table. They voted to recommend approval to add estate residential and neighborhood residential to Section 13.4.3, letter D, item number one, regarding that no amendments to the official zoning map shall be made to the following districts, the RS6, RS4, RCC, and RTH. Their recommendation did not include, including the active neighborhood character area. Their third portion was that the planning commission recommended denial of the amendment to Section 13.4.3, letter D, number two, regarding that no amendment to the official zoning map shall be allowed to rezone to the following districts, the RM2 and the RM3. Those are the recommendations that the planning commission made, as stated... As stated, the staff does recommend approval of the first reading of the text amendment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Counsel, any questions or comments? No questions or comments from counsel? Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Please share with us who you are and where you live.
Hi, Sarah Beeson, resident, Hamilton Commons. First and foremost, I appreciate the apology, Mayor Wilson. You did too full disclosure, also called me as well, so I do appreciate the apology. Before I speak today, I realize I do not speak on behalf of every resident of Roswell, but I am a longtime resident. I've lived here most of my life, moved here when I was a kid. So I am speaking on behalf of this Roswell resident. The question that I have first and foremost as it relates to this change in zoning. I know that the justification presented last time when they were introducing the moratorium was that they want to encourage mixed use. If that's the case, mixed use is both residential and commercial. So why is it that we're only creating a burden on the multifamily residential side, but not an equal burden for residential as opposed for creating the commercial zoning codes? What I mean by that is it's still going to be just as easy to create a strip shopping center here in Roswell, which we have plenty of available space with and a lot of blight, but you're not creating that same burden for a large-scale commercial to require any residential units as well. You're only putting it on this multifamily, which first and foremost, that's my question, why? But also, it begs the question of where did this come from? I looked into the most recent RM2, RM3, and RX approvals here in the city, and I could not find one. I went back a pretty long ways, and I know that one of the main developments that draws ire here is Sun Valley, which is Catherine. That was done under commercial heavy. And if you look at, these are the conditional uses that were put in place. Total number of 300 units should not be exceeded, more than 115,000 square foot should not be exceeded. Developer did that because council mayor at the time did not put any minimum requirements. So we're not skirting that issue from happening again because of the fact that the city was not able to figure out their conditional uses. Instead, we're actually limiting a lot of the types of housing, I'm sorry, that can be done here in Roswell. This is RM2 and RM3 here at the end for stacked flat as well as walk-up flat. Walk-up flats are less than eight units. That's something called gentle density, which I love. I know there's silver in this room, even those who say that they, I can't raise this thing, say that they support this change, also say they love gentle density. These are all walk-up flats. They're at least anywhere from three to up to eight units. The exception being that bottom right-hand corner is actually mixed use, but it's a really small portion of commercial as opposed to this really high percentage. And this down here, those are actually stacked flats. You have more than eight units in those areas, but it's great for infill density. It's great for walkability, and it encourages areas where we can actually have better homeownership. And what I mean by that is if you look here, these are not just for multifamily. These aren't just rental properties. These are owned properties as well. I mean, Councilwoman Hills, you ran on wanting to encourage homeownership here in Roswell. And frankly, what better way than providing an option that's half or even two-thirds of the price of our single-family homes for young professionals, young couples to be able to purchase a condo here, build that equity, and roll it into a single-family home later on? The bigger issue, this is benchmarks from our Comprehensive Plan. We have a very high percentage of senior citizens and those who are aging compared to, these are ages of young families. And I know, Mayor Wilson, you want to be a family-friendly community. What better way than to be able to provide a place for those to age in place? No yard to take care of, you're not having to do home maintenance. They can also, I know this is a big one for the city, not have to ask for exemptions on property taxes because they can afford the property taxes on those smaller units much more easy, much more easily, instead of having to go to a retirement community that they might not need at the time. That opens up that housing stock for young professionals and encourages businesses to want to come here because they want that young workforce that other North Fulton cities have that we do not have. So with that, I introduce this. This is the UDC. This is the zoning map. That is awful. You can't read that. But if you look at it more closely, RX, which is a part of those mixed housing options, is only zoned right here in this little square, right here in this little triangle, and this tiny little swatch right here. So I want to know what introduced these changes that we would strip that entire zoning code from our map instead of being able to use it elsewhere. I understand if East Roswell does not want more multifamily in their area. That's the beauty of a zoning map. We just don't zone it there. We can take it out of East Roswell to alleviate the concerns for that area and put more RX zoning onto the west side so we can do some of that infill density and encourage homeownership. I'll leave you with this. This is the housing options. I know that we're compared to Alpharetta a lot. Alpharetta has more apartments and condos per acre than Roswell. You can do the math there. This is a mix front, this is from the Comprehensive Plan. We have, the reason why we have more multifamily housing is because we're about a third of the size larger than Alpharetta. It's just basic math. But if you actually do the math there, we have fewer four-ret multifamily complexes, and we have fewer apartment terms of the mix of ratio of the housing stock compared to Alpharetta. So I just want to understand why, and I encourage y'all to vote against this. Thank you for your time, and I made my time this time.
You made it.
I did it.
Any other comments? Welcome, Yolanda, former person, great person, ran for city council. Please share with everybody who you are and where you live.
Yes, yes, sir. Greetings, mayor and council. My name is Yolanda Freeman, and I live at 3403 Tree Ridge Parkway, located in East Roswell. I am a renter at Seven Pines Apartments, and my comments tonight come to you in love, peace, and concern for all of the renters in Roswell. The issues building community unity and diversity in Roswell are my passion. Therefore, I come before you this evening to express my concerns that these changes to the UDC may negatively impact Roswell's future racial and economic diversity. I come tonight and ask you to table this agenda item until the mayor and city council have reported on the phases of the racial impact assessment funded by mayor and city council in 2020 and have fully implemented the city's long-term goal to develop a framework to conduct racial equity impact assessments on all future policy. If mayor and council will not table this agenda item, then I kindly ask for your word that you will meet with me and other African-American community leaders regularly, starting in May, and put the implementation of the racial equity assessments policy and a comprehensive affordable housing plan in your immediate priority list. I've heard the arguments that Roswell has enough standalone apartments. Roswell is the most affordable North Fulton community, and people of color have nothing to fear from these changes. I'm asking you to please put these proposed housing changes through an adjective racial equity impact assessment. I know personally, because I'm going to all of these programs, and I appreciate everything that's been done in Roswell. I'm asking you to do more by putting together a comprehensive plan for affordable housing in Roswell. Reporting on and fully implementing the racial impact assessment, especially in light of proposing these housing changes, is a legislative action that the mayor and city council should add to the city's commitment to racial equity, such as Roswell Roots, the Doc's Cafe Project, supporting the McHenry Brown Historical Marker Committee's rededication ceremony, and having a racial equity webpage on our city's website. In my opinion, there is a historical and a moral obligation for the City of Roswell to fully implement the racial impact assessment policy and have a comprehensive affordable housing plan due to the fact that the city was built with slave labor on land taken from the Cherokee people. Let's have the vision to build community, unity, and diversity among all races and economic groups in Roswell by tabling this proposal and working together to fully implement the racial impact assessment policy and creating a comprehensive plan for affordable housing in Roswell. This is my prayer that I pray daily because it's hard being a single mom in Roswell, and it's a struggle, and I just want everybody to just unite so that we can make progress for us all together. We can do this. I believe in Roswell. God bless you and your families.
Thank you, Yolanda. Thank you. Yes, sir. Welcome. Please share with us your name and where you live.
Thank you. My name is Mark Ellsworth. I live on Stroop Road here in Roswell. I'm a commercial real estate agent who's done sales and leasing throughout Roswell and across the entire metro Atlanta area for the last six years. Just for the record, I have no multifamily projects in Roswell or any in the future. I just have a personal opinion on the matter. I am opposed to the amendment because of its exclusionary, simply based on income, and I'd like to explain how that comes to pass. Interesting, this month is Fair Housing Month, and we've chosen this month to put together some, an amendment that possibly excludes affordable housing opportunities for a large section of our Roswell population. One thing that the board should know is that mixed-use apartment housing is typically twice as expensive as standalone apartments because of the construction and the amenities that are there. And as a result, as of today, the cost to rent an apartment in North Fulton is, on average, $1,846 per month. As a landlord, I want to see three times your income to rent you that apartment, which means that to rent an apartment in Roswell, your monthly salary needs to be $5,538, or approximately $66,000 a year. Biggest challenge that we're facing here in Roswell is labor shortages for our companies and businesses. By doing this, you ensure that prices will remain high and only go higher. Why would a restaurant employee, of which we have 248 restaurants, if I'm not mistaken, want to, making $12 an hour, want to drive in from Canton or Acworth or even further when they could easily find a job somewhere much closer? This is only going to exasperate the labor shortages that our businesses are experiencing currently. I would add that our, many of our city employees can't afford to live in Roswell. Many of our school teachers can't afford to live here, and we've already got tremendous amount of teacher shortages. If I can make the same salary as a teacher further out, why would I come to Roswell? I think there's several rules in place that are already adequate guidance for the commissioners and planners in terms of responsible development. Those include the UDC, the Comprehensive Plan, variance requests. I don't think that additional legislation or changes to the amendment are necessary. In my opinion, this amendment, it passed. It gives cover to the commissioners in planning to prevent any future housing needs for an entire block of our community without even having to take a vote on it because those amendments would never, those zoning opportunities would never come before the committee with this amendment. I believe we should have a housing stock in Roswell that represents the needs of our entire community. This includes senior housing, corporate housing, workforce housing, and low-income housing. Excluding certain people from being able to live in our community, whether directly or indirectly, does nothing to make Roswell a more inclusive community. If the board seeks to make, pass this amendment and make it harder for families with an income under $66,000, I would prefer that they do it by voting no on projects that come before the committee rather than not letting them come before. In my view, this is short-sighted and will only make matters worse for the existing businesses in Roswell. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Please share, please share with us your name and where you live.
My name is Lindsay Coates, and I am at 715 Old Park Place. I did want to state upfront that I am the president of an association, a local organization. This is all me personally and has no reflection on what they, all have their independent opinions. So just want to make that clear. I've been a Roswell resident for the last nine years. Prior to that, I lived in Roswell from fourth to sixth grade. I lived in Wood Creek Apartments behind Red Lobster, and I went to Mimosa, and I went to Crab Apple. This was during a time that my parents were splitting up, and my single mom was able to afford to live here. That experience was during such a formative years helped shape my worldview, but more so, the specific years living in Roswell were overwhelmingly positive and the reason my husband and I decided to move our family from Sandy Springs to Roswell. I'm also a Realtor and on the Government Affairs Committee for the Atlanta Realtors Association. You'll see later that there are many of those housing professionals here that find what is this being voted on is so egregious that they felt the need that they needed to speak out as well. I'll let them say their piece for the real estate market issues because they are numerous, but instead, I want to talk on something else. There is an innate us versus them thing happening here, and it is that you are, you're baking it into our Roswell housing system. Just yesterday, Mrs. Hills commented on Reddit that the leadership wants to move this city into family-friendly community that the majority wants. A, how are we not family-friendly already? B, why are we trying to exclude young professionals, first responders, service workers, et cetera? And what about people that don't want lawn maintenance or want to live in a single-family home? There are lots of them, the adult, adult community, there's 55-plus, that we are excluding, and it feels elitist and classist, and quite frankly, it feels like a slap in the face to someone with a background of living in Roswell previously in those apartments. I think that the real debate here, that's the real debate here. And you're cutting off condos and townhomes, and you don't differentiate between the rentals and the owned. And restricting this, restricting ourselves in this manner continues to close us off as a city to opportunities that we don't even know exist yet. I don't want Roswell to be like the surrounding cities. We can't. We're inherently different, and I love it that way. I don't want to see apartments either. I don't think anybody does. And if this is for West, if this is for East Roswell, I understand because they do have an issue over there. I understand that they're upset. But why, there are other ways to go about doing this than a blanket no. And I'm asking you not to approve this tonight. Table it, and let's find a solution that we can all come to together. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Yes, ma'am. Welcome, Mary Nelly. Please share with everybody your name and where you live.
Yes, hi. I'm Mary Nelly Delchero. I live at 1075 Churchill Lane. So I moved to Roswell in 1997 and rented an apartment off Dogwood with my husband, Michael. We're small business owners, and we work, we're real estate agents with Keller Williams. We've helped many people sell and buy and rent since 2005. Today, as everybody knows, we have a nationwide housing shortage. We're in a crisis. We don't have enough homes, new or resale or for rent. And folks don't want to sell because of this crisis. I've had to send Roswell clients, homeowners that have been here or renters that have been here for a long time that Roswell loves. I've sent them to East Cobb and other places because they could not afford to stay here. And then this is when we want to propose changes strictly prohibiting from the city from accepting future requests to rezone residential property, including single-family small lots. This is going to further escalate, escalate housing prices for both rental and owner-occupied properties. I have also reached out to a local principal here at one of the elementary schools just to ask what was the trend for registration in the past few years? And as you can imagine, it's gone down. Some of it due to COVID, but some of it due to, what can you guess? You know, young families moving in. So based on that, so I just, you know, want to bring that up as far as the elementary schools having a decline there. And also, in a paper recently, the app, they did a story on a presentation during a school board meeting in March, how they were talking about how Fulton County is going to have something like 14,000 empty desks this fall, and that a lot of it has to do with the lack of affordable housing. So it's definitely out there that there is a consistent decline here. And then the last thing I want to finish with is, on behalf of our community, we also like to know where we are on the process of the racial equity impact assessment that Yolanda was talking about earlier because that is supposed to be a, is supposed to regulate and guide the city's approach to transportation, public safety, and housing. So I'm just curious where we are with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Nelly. Yes, ma'am. Welcome, and please share with us your name and where you live.
I'm Ashley Glass, and I live on Wave Tree. I also lived in an apartment, a one-building, multiple-unit, standalone, multifamily apartment. I also lived in an apartment, a one-building, multiple-unit, standalone, multifamily apartment complex. The exact kind that you want to be in in Roswell. You see, I saved up enough money to purchase my first house in Roswell 24 years ago. Since then, I started a business in Roswell 15 years ago. As a small business, I employ 21 people. I am one of those people that now you don't want living in Roswell. I would like mayor and city council to think of Roswell's future. What you are doing is taking all of the people like me and turning us away. Is this how you want Roswell to be seen, as an exclusive community that only welcomes the wealthy? Let me also mention, I'm married to a fireman. We would have never been able to afford living in Roswell if we did not both have two jobs. The chief of the city department couldn't even afford to live in Roswell. I just want you to remember how many months and months it took to fill vickers, and this is the kind of apartment buildings you want to be to be built. I want to mention this as well. Whenever I have come to city hall meetings recently, all I hear about is Alpharetta, Alpharetta, Alpharetta. Well, this is Roswell. You were elected mayor and city council of Roswell. I moved to Roswell because of the character, the parks, the river, the people, Canton Street, the small-town feel, and I knew that it was the type of community that I wanted to grow old in. What Roswell is becoming is become not becoming the type of community that I had pictured. With that said, again, when you say no to apartments, you're saying no to me, you're saying no to all of my employees who I love dearly, you're saying no to any young person wanting to live in this community, that they eventually can buy a house like I did, raise their family like I have, and maybe even start a business like I have.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome. Please share with us your name and where you live.
Thank you. Marla Curriton, 295 Tyson Circle, Roswell, Georgia, 30076. Okay. Let's see. How do I get this? Which one?
Oh.
I want to simply underscore a few data points during my time, and these are data points that underlie what many of the people who have spoken tonight are talking about as it relates to multifamily development. And it is why many Roswell residents, not just a few, but many, are against mayor and city council's recommendations, which will restrict and limit future multifamily development options. This is from the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. As a market researcher, I'm very familiar with demographic data like this. A map on this map, the dot equals 25 people. The top is from 2019, but I want to hone in on the 2018 at the bottom. I mean, the point is to show changes over time, but really, we want to hone in on this bottom map to underscore the racial density in Roswell. I went ahead with a pen and kind of darkened in 400. I think, you know, I tend to think of east-west based on Alpharetta Highway, but I know for discussion purposes, that's 400, so east-west Roswell. I went ahead and put little stars to highlight kind of key areas of racial density, and Hispanic and Latino population is reflected by the yellow dots, black, African-American, the green dots, and white population, the blue. So it's easiest to see the yellow density areas, little harder to see the green because it's what's close to blue in areas, so I went ahead and put the stars and even circles. So when you think about Roswell, and this is 2018, the most racially dense areas, you have the first area that just pops, and that is, of course, west of 400, north of Holkenbridge, east of Warsaw, heavily Hispanic, heavily Latino. Another area to call out would be here, Martin's Landing area. There's also some other multifamily development there, south of Holkenbridge Road. And then further along, Holkenbridge Road, north of Holkenbridge Road towards Centennial, you have both Latino and African-American density. So both sides, east Roswell, you have multifamily and racially dense areas overlapping, as well as west Roswell as it relates to Latino residents. So there's an overlap there. What impacts multifamily as it relates to Roswell impacts Roswell's Hispanic and African-American communities disproportionately, one in the same. So limiting multifamily is going to limit and impact our communities of color. They're intertwined. Also, limiting multifamily at this point in time will still cause rent rates to rise because the demand is going to remain high for some time. And so ultimately, Roswell residents are going to start getting priced out. We've heard stories about that happening and have to move out of the city. And it's going to happen faster than it would otherwise, because as people have noted, this is a broad, global, national issue, but still, limiting multifamily will accelerate issues in the city. And has been mentioned has been mentioned before, a large concentration of Roswell workers who also live in Roswell live in heavily multifamily areas. Again, so we can see there are areas that we have talked about. We know that 30076 is where our affordable housing is, and then we see the racial density. The Planning Commission voted against the changes that are being discussed, and so I encourage mayor and city council to also vote against the changes and not encourage the changes, as you say. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please share with us your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Daryl O'Hare. I've been here before. I live in Arbor Creek, which is a section right next to Highway 9, pretty much. It's one mile exactly from North Fulton Hospital. It is precisely an area that I would think that if we eliminate these codes, we might be missing some great opportunities. So I think that I would rather you say no to something that came to you that you saw that was ridiculous, but something that might actually fit into an area that already has transportation, restaurants, walk-up services, pharmacies, a hospital. And that's not the only corridor that has that. But I have a concern that if we get rid of these codes, we might be doing a disservice to a great many people who could benefit from, it could be the gentle density, if you would use that term, or going up, even standalone apartments might even work because the services are readily available in the area, and the transportation is actually there as well. One thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that I'm going to try to, you said hit overhead, where do I? Okay. Hopefully, this will show you. So this is the list from Fulton County Schools, Title I Elementary Schools in Zone 5, which is, last time I was here, people were talking about 30076 being the affordable sector of Roswell. Well, I live in 30076. My children have gone to two Title I schools, Henbury Springs and Elkins Point. We live right next to, actually across the street from Elkins Point. We're very proud of being from there. We also know that in the in Zone 5 includes 30075 Vickery Mill Elementary School. Four out of the 10 Zone 5 elementary schools are Title I. That means they receive free and reduced lunch, and they qualify for federal aid in that case. Those children need a place to live, and their parents need a place to work and to continue to enjoy the prize-winning benefits of these community schools that many of us who have lived in these areas want to continue. We want them to be these amazing schools that provide the services for everybody that is there. I do fear that eliminating code actually will affect the status of these schools, and we've already talked about, you know, enrollment rates decreasing. I don't want it to be because somebody is not able to afford to be where they are living now. And if they had an option, there are several pockets along the commercial corridors that we could start using for even standalones, but gentle density, all kinds of things exist, especially where I live. And I know that on, so just to give you an idea of where zone, sorry, this is not going to work. How do I? How do I make it go forward? Oh, okay. Well, that's zone, that is Zone 5. So that gives you a sense of the east and west side of Roswell and pretty much 30076, which, by the way, I live on the west side of Roswell, but my post office is on the east side of Roswell on Eves Road, even though I have two post offices right next to my home. So what's on the east and what's on west is not unified. I think that should be one of your concerns, is what are you going to do on the east? It should be on the west. You should also think that simply being able to say no is better than saying you can't even apply. That sends a message to me, being very proud, Fulton County parents going to two schools with so much to offer. And I will end by saying that when we were moved, we were redistricted to Milton High School. We were supposed to go to Roswell. And we started to take the bus, because my kids always took the bus. Well, we walked to school, and then they took the bus. I will tell you that the first buses that came through, they were packed, they had three adult-sized children to a bench, and they arrived at Milton High School, and the kids at the school labeled our bus the ghetto bus. I don't want, I had to get involved to get an extra bus, where all these extra services were going to the other neighborhoods that were not being given to ours. And I just think that the way we're approaching this zoning does send a message that is inappropriate to a workforce and people in the city. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Welcome. Please share with us your name and where you live.
Good evening. My name is Erin Bromley. I live in Martin Ridge Road in Roswell. I just, two very quick things. I know that one of the concerns that we've had around here has been about traffic, that increasing, having a, you know, multifamily, either, you know, lots of townhomes or lots of apartments increases the traffic. But if you see in this chart, the area that has, you know, the least amount of vehicles are the areas that actually have apartments, because those people live close together. And, you know, they they tend to stay in the areas where they are, schools, they work close, so the traffic increase is not going to be coming from this. The traffic problems that we have mostly is people, like they mentioned before, going from East Cobb to 400 and vice versa. And I just want to, you know, this information came from the Roswell 2040 Plan, not from us. So that was just the first one. And the second one is, I just wanted to read some some talking points I have. I know that you, mayor and council, are not responsible for solving the affordable problem in this area on your own. I understand that. But but you are supposed to collaborate with the citizens and the businesses and the neighboring cities to prepare for the future. I would suggest that you hold some sort of affordable housing summit with leaders from the Roswell churches, from North Fulton Community, Drake House, the Northern Fulton Improvement Network, Habitat for Humanity, and Mass Ministries, so that you can learn how the changes to the UDC affect not only the current residents, but also the future residents. Their input is very important, and they're, you know, like, this is a point that I made before, they are not represented, you know, even today, right? Again, if they are not coming to you, we probably need to go and ask them, what are their needs, what do they think in the future? Because I think Roswell could become the leader in affordable housing and variety of housing, and therefore, it will be more desirable for people to come over here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bromley. Yes, sir. Welcome, Roy. Please share with everybody who you are and where you where you live.
My name is Rory Robichaud, and I live at 2900 Roxyburg Drive on the east side. First, a comment that was made to me right before I came up, and that is that the Planning Commission voted against these changes. I don't understand why the city council would just negate the opinion of the Planning Commission. But let me go into a couple of other points. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I do have a serious question for you with possibly one follow-up. And it's not a rhetorical question. I'm not going to ask you to break protocol to get into a debate tonight, but it is something that I think we would like to see in writing at some point soon, response to some of this. And it is important to many of the issues, and maybe at even higher level than some of the things we've been looking at. Do you individually and collectively believe the city of Roswell should take a material, proactive steps beyond zoning to resolve the issue of a lack of affordable workhouse workforce housing in the city of Roswell? Again, do you believe the city of Roswell should take material, proactive steps beyond zoning to resolve the issue of a lack of affordable workforce housing in the city of Roswell? It's a straightforward question, and I think we can get a straightforward yes or no to that question. If the answer is, if you do not believe the city of Roswell should take a material role or have a material role to play beyond zoning in addressing and resolving this issue, in essence, you believe that this is an issue to be addressed by the free market, then I have no further question. On the other hand, if you do believe that the city of Roswell should take proactive, material steps to address this very serious problem of a lack of affordable workforce housing in this city, I would ask that you let the city of citizens of Roswell know what that plan is. What is it that you plan to do to address this very serious problem? Thank you.
Thank you, Rory. Yes, ma'am. Welcome, and please share with us your name and where you live.
My name is Lisa Stamey, and I live at 1160 Martin Ridge Road. We've listened tonight to talk about the fact of, is Roswell asking that only the wealthy live here? Are we asking that we don't care about our workforce? Do we not care about our young, up-and-coming professionals? Do we not want to inspire people to do great things because our community is fabulous and they have all the resources and support that they need? On my way here, I actually got a an alert from the New York Times, and it was an article about McKinsey Scott. Well, most people know her as Mrs. Jeff Bezos. And she, it, the article talks about how she was in boarding school and had to leave because her family filed bankruptcy. So that means that she was a wealthy family and no longer could be in boarding school. That means that she had a significant impact to her finances. Well, inside of that significant impact, she was loaned by one of her friend's money so that she could finish school. By finishing school and finishing class, she was able to have a class with Toni Morrison, who became her mentor and also inspired her to be an author. A simple act of a friend giving money allowed her to have an exponential change of life from being a person who had been impacted by her family's bankruptcy. So I'm just going to say a show of hands, but I know that you can't do that. How many people believe that Roswell- How many people believe that Roswell comes from a community of a great heart? Who is happy to support all of our charitable organizations from the Drake House to Mus to North Fulton? Who is happy to take a friend to lunch when they've had a really bad day? Who's willing to pay it forward when it's your turn at the coffee shop and somebody says, oh, somebody paid your coffee. Would you like to pay for the person behind you? Okay? Who finds the extra chore for your child or your neighborhood person who's trying to fulfill their goal to get to the thing that they want or to support the organization or thing that inspires them? Those are all community things lifting up someone else in the community. This is our philanthropic addition to the community. The difference is, you as a government, this zoning, this opportunity to say yes to a really cool, gentle infill or a really inspirational multifamily, a little bit bigger, a little bit smaller, where it's located, that's the yes. You are the loan. You are the loan to the community that says, we believe in you and we want you to do better. I told you I was going to come here and ask you to think outside the box every single time that this issue came up. I'm going to continue to ask you to think outside the box, have the heart, on paper and in person, that you say that you are in these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. Welcome. Please share with us your name and where you live. Welcome. Glad you're here.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Stephen Davis with the Atlanta Apartment Association, live just a little bit from here off Holcomb Bridge Road. Thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight. Really, I just want to talk about housing. The Apartment Association represents apartment owners and 16 owners, managers, and developers across the 16 county area, and many of our members are right here. We support housing of all types, single-family, multifamily, and all price points across the lane. We just feel that more housing, more housing, the better, and in the appropriate fashion where the cities believe they should be. And we hope that we can continue to do that. Part of that is that we feel we would like a little more time to discuss with you, some, with some of the other stakeholders from the, from the realtor community, from the faith community, from the Council for Quality Growth, and from the Apartment Association to come together with yourself and with council to have a stakeholders meeting to discuss some of these items and see if there's, to borrow from Michael Scott from the office, a win-win-win situation to where everyone can get a little bit of what they want. So thank you for that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Welcome. Please share with us your name and where you live.
Hi, my name is Joseph Santoro. I'm here on behalf of the Council for Quality Growth, and we're just shy here about 15 minutes in Sandy Springs, Atlanta. So with that, I'll be very brief in my remarks. Mayor Wilson, council members, thank you for the opportunity just to provide a few remarks today. I know I sent out a letter a few hours ago, this afternoon. And really, I just want to say, here at the council, we, we are a nonprofit association representing the development and growth industry here in Atlanta. With us, developers, builders, engineers, contractors, you name it, with a vested interest in quality growth and development, both in metro Atlanta and here in the city of Roswell. And, you know, we work very closely with our local governments, our elected officials and staff on a lot of zoning, planning, and other regulatory issues around the region. And really, having that smart, sustainable growth for, for thriving, continue to have thriving communities. And I know there's a lot of things mentioned today, so I will not go into any detail there. But we, we do respect your requests and would like to host and be happy to coordinate and set up a stakeholder industry meeting to, to address some of these long-term needs and of all the residents here in the ci, in the city before a final decision is approved. So with that, I will stop there. But I will just say that the Council for Quality Growth is here as a resource for the city and let us know how we can be helpful.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Welcome. Please share with us your name and where you live.
My name is Laura Jones, and I live at 175 Kings Mill Court in the Mill area, near some of the other speakers earlier tonight. I'm here because I am also against this change to the UDC. I understand the campaign promises and the efforts to get rid of apartments in general. I think that's a little bit misguided. I can understand the frustration with some of the things that's happened in the past and things that people are afraid of in the future. But I think, as other people have mentioned, keeping this in the coding and keeping this as an opportunity, you still have the opportunity to say no to things that are bad for Roswell. But it also gives you the opportunity to say yes, when there's an infill project that would increase community, keep people close, reduce the traffic by allowing people to walk. I chose to live close to town so that I could walk somewhere, although I can't because, anyway, there's no side box. But, but if everybody is closer, and if you design it correctly, then you can have corridors for people to walk. Some of the big apartment complexes are not walkable, and I have heard that from people, that they just kill community because you can't walk and you get stuck. But if you require them to be walkable and to be part of the community and to be bikeable, then everybody could enjoy that. It would be a pathway, a way to connect the communities, and that would increase not by building the multi-use that you're wanting, but by creating multi-use organically, by infilling the commercial we already have with multifamily, that we need to sustain that and take some of that traffic away, so people can choose to go and walk to some of these destinations we already have. So my take is, we need to not approve this, take a step back, figure out how we can actually address the problem. As I mentioned in a previous remarks at another meeting, I think we need to, we need to state what is the problem that we're trying to fix and why is this the best solution to it? It sounds like many people don't think this is the best solution to it, and I would agree with that, that there's probably another solution to fix the problem that people actually are having here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Welcome. Michael, please, another, just a little under, welcome, is another formal candidate. Glad to have you. Michael, share with everybody who you are and where you live.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, thank you, council. My name is Michael Delchero. I live at 1075 Churchill Lane in Roswell. Have some notes and, but I, I do want to say, like, just right out the bat, that one glaring measurement this evening, two that stand out. I haven't heard any supporters of this motion this evening. The second thing is that Planning Commission denied these recommendations, and you all made a decision to put forward, I watched the stream of the last working session on committee, to move, move forward and put this on the agenda. So, you know, being a small business owner, listening to people's voices and looking at the data, you don't need rocket signs to see what was displayed here for the last maybe 90 minutes this evening. The second thing is, it's not really about building apartments everywhere, okay? It's about housing choice. Pay attention, 60 Minutes did a special. Read your favorite newspaper or website, okay? Affordable housing is a national epidemic. I have two sons in college, one might join the military, and I have a 13-year-old. They're not going to be able to afford Roswell. They work at Target across the street and stay at home with mom and dad because they're, they're commuters for school. My father just turned, who turned 77 here next week, he couldn't afford Roswell. That, that alone is a personal take. When I ran last fall, it was blood, sweat, and tears. And I stood up at debates like the mosque and at Pleasant Hill, that, you know, I stand for all of Roswell's voices. And what is transpiring here is absurdity. I watched all the meetings so far. Today is actually day 100 of your term. Today is. And I see how there's lack of people communicating at the meetings and not stating their case. And we had a motion this evening where two people didn't say a word. You ran a campaign to speak for our city. Stand up! Damn it! My grandparents are buried here. My dad and grandparents came here from Italy with the chest for the American dream. How dare you hold them back? Where's the love for this city? I apologize. There's no other, no other options available. You've got corporate buyers buying up and down Grimes Bridge. They're all going to become rental homes. You just watch. You're sending the wrong message, eliminating it from the code and taking it off the pages is not doing y'all any good. And I've got an escape clause for you. It's only the first reading. So you can go back, pray, and sleep about this, about what does all of Roswell require, and you can table it. Hunt, hold. I'm giving you all a great out right now. I know the processes of the city extremely well. But if you move forward with this and vote on it on the 28th, you're setting up our city for risk, not only financially for the legal fees, but also a stigma. And perception is everything. I want to thank you all for listening to me tonight. I, I wasn't sure if I was going to say anything this evening, but my sweet wife spoke. You know, we're a family of crayons, my family. We have Thai, Spanish, Italian, German, Christians, Buddhists. Her sweet uncle passed away two weeks ago, one of those beautiful services. We're a family of crayons. I am, I am proud of that. I want to thank you all for listening for your, for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Jason, former mayoral candidate. Nice to have you back this evening.
Well, I, I didn't mean to give you such a bad time about Expo, but I have a friendly message now. I, as I said before, the affordable issue in housing, it's a national issue. We cannot solve it locally. The people who spoke so passionately tonight for affordable housing speak from their heart. I hear them. You hear them. I'm not saying that they're wrong. What I'm saying is they don't understand the economics about housing. We have a national tax policy that is nominally progressive, but in reality is one of the most progressive tax policies in the civilized world. We have irresponsible fiscal and monetary policies. These are the things that are driving housing to these unaffordable levels. It's, there's nothing you can do to change that. You can try to solve the problem by saying, okay, we're going to have all kinds of high-density multi-use housing. It's not going to be affordable. For one thing, high-density housing requires two particular amenities that nobody wants to discuss, elevators and structured parking. The cost of these things preclude anything that's affordable without massive subsidies. Do we have money in Roswell for massive subsidies? No, we do not. We can have this high-density, non-mixed-use housing. It's not going to change affordability in Roswell. It's not going to change affordability in the region. But what it will do is put Roswell on an irresponsible fiscal path, because if you make your multifamily housing a function of mixed-use zoning, you use what is, right now, the strongest part of the real estate market, and that is multifamily housing, and you leverage that to get the commercial components built that diversify your tax base and create more opportunities for jobs to be created here in Roswell. As I see it, there are basically two constituencies that are talking a lot about affordable housing or high-density residential housing, and, and it's not being exclusionary, it's being realistic. You've got the very passionate people here who mean well, who do not understand the economics. Then you've got another group of people here who stand to benefit from high-density, single-use residential because they're either existing commercial property owners that don't want the competition, or they're people who have assembled all kinds of land purchases that would stand to profit handsomely from high-density zoning. The people who are well-meaning are being used by the people who know better. And they're both saying the same things. One group means it, the other group means to profit from it. And the rest of us stand to lose. I support what you're doing. You've got to make multifamily a function of mixed-use. If you don't, you sell the city short, you sell our future short. And there's been some talk about, well, this, this was rejected by the City Planning Commission. Well, probably most of the people on City Planning Commission were appointed by the last mayor. Might have a little bit to do with the disconnect between what you're trying to do and what they're recommending. Let's be realistic. Anyway. Well, I got a minute left, but I'm going to cut it off right there.
Thank you, Mr. Yow. Yes, ma'am. Welcome, Denise, if you'll share with everybody your name and where you live. Thank you.
My name is Denise Rao, 170 Charleston Circle, Roswell, Georgia, 30076. Roswell is in the redevelopment stage of our life cycle as a city. What we need is commercial redevelopment. We don't have the large tracts of land for new, single-use apartment complexes. As a matter of fact, since the adoption of the UDC, I can only recall one instance of an applicant applying for an RM district, and that was subsequently changed to CX. Time is money for everyone, especially developers. So this is why we need to clearly define our goals and our code. Retiring the RM districts is actually a more strategic approach. If you read next door, you learn that the conditions in some of our single-use apartments are not ideal. And it is common knowledge in the apartment industry that in places that give out new apartment zonings, there is not a lot of incentive to invest in the existing complexes. The old apartments could never compete with the new ones, so they just keep raking the money in with no improvements. Nothing being built today is affordable. New, single-use luxury apartments do very little to improve the lives of our community members who presently live in our workforce housing. Single-use apartments, however, do make a lot of money for the people who develop and invest in apartments. Roswell has more apartments than Alpharetta, Johns Creek, Milton. We have over 11,000 units, which, according to my math, is greater than the 8,000 that Alpharetta has. The east side has more apartment units than single-family homes. If single-use apartments were the key to economic vitality, then the east side would be booming, and it is not. According to the Atlantic Business Chronicle, 30076 is an island of affordability in the North Fulton Sea, the proverbial double-edged sword. While affordability can lead to opportunity, the question remains, why 30076 is not keeping pace with the surrounding area? A good many of our single-use apartments, our workforce housing, are in the three major activity areas identified in the comp plan. Again, our challenge, how to encourage the creation of vibrant, commercial, mixed-use areas that build upon the already existing single-use apartments. Change is hard when we agree. So we have a consensus, which gives us a good start. Change is hard when we agree, so we have a consensus which gives us a good start. And we have many existing building types in our code to create dynamic infill residential and commercial areas: the mixed-use building with multifamily, townhouses, cottage courts, duplexes, which is something new I learned from the last council meeting. And of course, RX is still available as a zoning district. Our existing residential neighborhoods are not broken, so there is no need for a fix. But it is important to stabilize and protect our neighborhoods, because they are being pressured. Inflation is the number-one near-term threat to affordability and quality of life. It is a universal threat because of rising interest rates, rising prices for food, gas, and essentials. Wall Street's targeting of neighborhoods that they buy, then rent, is a big midterm threat to affordability and building generational wealth, because Wall Street's appetite is for the very neighborhoods of starter homes that are attainable to young families and young professionals. I've lived through many cycles of Wall Street's irrational exuberance, and sadly, it never ends well for the majority. Banks are already predicting an economic slowdown. These cycles are painful, but there will be opportunity. And that is why we need a plan that is balanced, that maximizes our brand potential, and that features our differential advantages that distinguish us from our sister cities. Think big and build small. And in conclusion, I just want to say, the community has been discussing these issues over the course of the last two years. There's been extensive outreach. Thousands of people have participated. So this is not something that is just being pulled out of the air. It is based on input from the residents of Roswell. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Any other comments? Thank you very much for everyone's comments tonight and input. At this time, I'd like to bring it back to council for any other thoughts or comments. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for your input. Over the last 10 years, we have been focusing on commercial for Roswell. We haven't had the success that we had hoped to see in the commercial area, and part of it is driven by not having clear messages of the type of growth we want. And this is why we are focusing on mixed use, because we desperately need commercial as a city to help balance us and to help balance the tax base for the residents. Thank you, the Apartment, Atlanta Apartment Association, Steve, for coming. I was an active member and under Russ Webb's tenure, when he was there. Sorry that you guys lost him to Tampa. And I'm so glad that you're here and that you mentioned that there are many types of housing besides standalone housing that you support. Also, we have a lot of existing standalone apartment houses that need, and we would encourage redevelopment. There's opportunities in those areas to improve those older complexes, perhaps even increase some density there if that worked. So just bringing it back, I hear what everybody's saying, but we also have a financial fiduciary responsibility to balance the portfolio of the city as well, just like we balance our 401Ks and our investment portfolios. We balance these types of things on behalf of the city. But I just wanted to thank everybody for their input tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Counsel, any other thoughts or questions or comments? Councilmember Vanstrom?
I'd like to clarify one thing. Being on council and working in the economic development realm for the last couple of months, three, four months now, the one comment that was made that we have corporations buying up homes and renting those homes out, and we have corporations buying up townhomes and renting those up in condominiums and renting those out, that is happening. That is happening regardless of whether we build apartments or don't build apartments. That's a whole nother category that this council is going to be addressing, and I'm glad to hear we're going to have some support when we address that, because that's another area that is not healthy for the economy of our city at this point. We have imbalances, as Councilman Hall just suggested, in business tax revenue at this point in time. I'm not against affordable housing. I am very in favor of affordable housing once we've adjusted our balance sheets and once we've taken the right action to create a balance that offsets the tax burden on the residents. And I believe that this is going to be a step forward in the direction that we need to head, so that we can make sure that we do balance our books better and that we rely more on businesses coming into the city and having more commercial activity to offset the revenues that are so dependent upon the residents right now. I do have one quick question from Ms. Diaboll, if I could. Is that still, can I still do that? At this point, if this is voted on, and it's RM2, RM3, multi-use, multifamily, are we distinguishing apartments and condominiums, or is that automatically going to happen as we go forward with what we're discussing?
So currently, RM2 and RM3 are the multifamily classifications, and it is listed as just multifamily. The next text amendment that you're hearing this evening for initiation is breaking up the use in the chart, in the use tables, where we'll have multifamily slash condominium and multifamily slash apartment. That has not been initiated yet. That is your next item on the agenda.
And if we initiate that as a next item, and this is only a first reading?
Okay, so this is the first reading of this text amendment. It's different than what you're looking at. That item, if you initiate it, must go through Planning Commission and then back to Mayor and Council for a first and second reading.
I guess my point is, are we?
And the definitions are already in process, which you've initiated. They are going to Planning Commission next week for their hearing, and then they'll be back to Mayor and Council.
Are we putting the cart before the horse, or are we fine this way? I want there to be a definite difference between apartment and condominium in this discussion.
And you have brought that forward. This one just came a little early, but you have moved forward with the definitions, and that is in process already. And then the next step is the item that you have under initiation for this evening.
I think the question is, if they adopt this ordinance, and they don't allow rezoning to RM2 and RM3, will they not be allowed to have condos in RM2 and RM3 because it is multifamily? It's multifamily condo, but if we're not going to allow any rezoning to RM2 or RM3, then that's just not going to allow condos in those.
So this is Lenora Bromberg, Deputy Director of Community Development. So I'll start with, the definition for multifamily today is lumped together, and there is no separation for condo and apartment, but that has been initiated by council, and as Jackie said, will be heard by Planning Commission next week. That is a definition of that term. Multifamily as a use will be split into an apartment for rent and a condo for sale. RM2 is a zoning classification of multifamily, which actually is much broader than just apartments. RM2 as a zoning classification historically could have multiple housing types in it. So that's the zoning classification that's referring to a classification of housing as opposed to the definition of it. So the definitions are actually separate and standalone from the actual zoning category. So regardless of whether or not the text amendment that you're discussing now moves forward, the definitions are happening as well in a parallel and separate tract.
With the permission of the audience here and the council and the staff, this old man has to go use the restroom, and so I apologize. So we're going to take a 10-minute recess. Thank you.
Thank you.